No.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you to the Board of Ed and staff for having us here today. First, I want to congratulate all the newly elected or re-elected officials for the Board of Ed. Congratulations and those currently serving, thank you all for your commitment. Dr. Michaels, welcome for having us, thank you. I'd also like to begin by introducing our two newly elected officials, Randy Wagner, Court Myel Schmidt. Would you gentlemen have anything to say before we proceed?
No, not really, just thank you for having us here, I'm looking forward to it, it's a good discussion, and thank you again.
Commissioner Baker, would you like any comments?
All the comments I'm capable of making over the years, but congratulations on all of the newly elected. Looking forward to working with my former history teacher back in 1969 or 1971, somewhere in there, Stan Stauffer, always a...
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two, good memory, and it's always a pleasure to be in the same room with him. And actually, I started my middle school career at Williamsport, and Ms. Fisher was a teacher at Williamsport back then, so just can't get away from the people that guided us, and we've been around our whole entire lives, which is a good thing. So, thank you.
Commissioner Baker, would you like to add a comment?
Certainly, congratulations to those who were re-elected to the Board, and congratulations to your leadership, President Williams and Vice President Stauffer, on your selection. I too really appreciate the connection that I have personally to many here, including Melissa Williams, who was my elementary school teacher, and Dr. Michael, who was my middle school principal. So, I appreciate those connections as well, and thanks for your guidance along the way. Would like to commend the Board of Ed, I know you've made the news recently on two items that I think are noteworthy. I think the schools overall scored very well in the school report cards at the state level, and the SAT scores of our high school students seem to be very favorable to schools in the state and even nationwide, so congratulations on your effort to make those achievements happen.
Gentlemen, thank you for those comments, President Williams, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, President Klein. President Klein, Vice President Baker, Commissioner Keefers, Myel Schmidt, and Wagner, thank you for the opportunity to meet in joint session today. We're here to present to you the priority and needs of Washington County's public schools, and Dr. Michael and staff are ready to make that presentation. Dr. Michael.
Good afternoon to all Board members, appreciate you being here. Today, we really have kind of three objectives. We're not going to share specific dollar asks necessarily with the Board of County Commissioners in the FY-20 budget. I think we have a meeting scheduled in February, we did have a two-hour work session with our Board where we did share my budget proposal with the Board of Education, but there's a whole process you have to go through to get to that point when we talk to the County Commissioners about our budget. But today, we really have three purposes. We want to go through historically some of the information over the last 10 or 12 years about the budgeting and the relationship between the Board of Education and County Commissioners. Obviously, many of you weren't here at the beginning of this process, or may or may not have had decision-making power in some of this, but there's always been kind of a little bit of mystery or myth about some of the dollars and numbers and transfers that have occurred over the years. We thought with two new County Commissioners, new Executive Director, the Administrator of the County, might just be a good opportunity for another member recently formally elected. I just thought it would be important to go through a little bit of this information and how it's affected us. We certainly realize from the County Commissioner's standpoint, it's easy to look at road tax and road money and how that's affected the county. Similar changes have happened to the Board of Education here locally, and we think it's important for you to understand how that's affected our budget. We're spending a little bit of time talking about our student body. It has changed dramatically over the last couple of years, and even some of the data that we're going to show you today doesn't accurately reflect the changes of our student demographics. We can't put our finger completely on it, we do believe the opioid crisis is a huge part of it, some of the challenges that our families are facing economically, mental health is a huge part of this issue, but some of our special ed staff and some of our student support staff that have worked with our students for many, many years are pointing to the last two or three years as a dramatic change in the student body that we're trying to educate here in Washington County, and that no longer can be denied. We need to face that, we welcome all the children that come through our doors, and we are going to do the best to educate them, but we are looking at a very different group of students than we have over the last previous five, 10, 20 years before. For those of you who haven't been in a school system, I would say in the last three or four years, I know Mrs. Murray is probably the closest that's been in the schools recently as an educator, or even as a student, it's been a long while since most of us have been a student. School is very, very different, and the challenges our teachers are facing every day, just from a starting point, are very different, and we need you to be aware of that. So, we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about demographics of our student body, a little bit, very similar to what we did last year for the County Commissioners that were here last year during that presentation, and then we're going to have some big generic asks that we want you to start considering as you enter your budget season for FY-20. So, not specific to our budget, but just overarching pieces of budget information that we like to ask you about. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Prue, he's going to walk you through a document, we shared this with staff, I think maybe with the County Commissioners, probably about a year ago, we've updated it with some information to make sure it's accurate, but I don't think we ever really had a chance to go through it in detail, and we just think it's a great opportunity for both Boards to understand our historic perspective of educational dollars here in Washington County. So, Mr. Prue.
Good afternoon, thank you, Dr. Michael. So, I know you have the PowerPoint slides in front of you, and there are a number of animations, so we're going to walk you through what some of those animations are to highlight some of the key points of that historical funding. So, this is the document that Dr. Michael alluded to, we've tracked county funding back to 2009 to show some historical trend of where we were from 2009, let's say, to 2012, and then moving forward from 12 to 2019. We'll walk you through at least the first line very slowly, kind of give you a sense of some of the base definitions and where we are. The red bar highlighted on the screen right now is the FY-2009 year. As you can see, looking at the document, the first column there is the enrollment K to 12, we had 21,187 students in that fiscal year, it was an increase of 121 students from the year prior. Maintenance of effort funding that year was $84.7 million, and the county awarded to the school system on nearly $1.3 million above maintenance of effort. Outside of maintenance of effort, the county provided $5 million that year, which was earmarked to pay for the school health program, the school nurses, which was funded directly to the county health department, it paid for the replacement buses on our 12-year replacement cycle, it paid for crossing guards, and the Judy Center manager, for a total county allocation of $91 million, which equated to nearly $4,300 per student, and was $90 more than it was in FY-2008. And that allocation actually was a 2% increase in overall allocation per student in that year over the year prior. Slide you have behind it really just reinforcing the data that, again, enrollment increased by 121 students, the county provided 1.3 million above maintenance of effort, $5 million outside of maintenance of effort for a number of services you see there on the screen, and again, the allocation per student increased over the year prior by $90.43. As we look at 2010, we increased by 50 students in that year, maintenance of effort was $86.2 million, the county provided, again, above maintenance of effort, $1.6 million in funding, provided $5.2 million in funding outside of maintenance of effort, again, school nurses to the health department, replacement buses on the 12-year cycle, the crossing guard program, and the Judy Center program for the manager, for a total allocation of $93 million, which was $85 more per student in FY-10 than it was in FY-09. Again, recap of a lot of the statements I just gave you. As we move into 2011, we had an increase of 146 students, maintenance of effort increased to $88.4 million, and this was the first year we saw where the county did not provide funding above maintenance of effort, it was simply $5, which we understand historically was rounding to a certain dollar value. $3.8 million this year was provided outside of maintenance of effort, and as we look at the list of items that was paid for, the replacement buses were no longer paid for outside of maintenance of effort, so that was funding reduced to us from county government in that year. The allocation per student then actually decreased by $64, because we saw a decrease in the outside of maintenance of effort funding, and we saw an increase in students, the allocation, the dollars that actually went to educate students declined in FY-2011. And you can see that, again, highlighted, and again, replacement services for buses was eliminated, that's an expense we had to bear, we had that expense in our budget, the county continually paid for it, this was the first year we had to absorb that cost into our budget fully. In 2012, we saw an increase of 259 students, maintenance of effort was 89.5 million, 12,000 above maintenance of effort, and again, an additional reduction this year, we're down to 3.3 million in maintenance of effort, the funding for the crossing guards and the funding for the Judy Center manager were eliminated in this fiscal year, so only the nurses was paid for as funding towards the health department, and again, a decrease this year, again, of $27, so this is a decrease now two years in a row, so 4,300 in 2010, we're down to, 4,382 in 2010, we're down to 4,289 in dollars per student over a two-year period. Again, the recap of the statements I just provided to you. In 2013, we increased by 82 students, maintenance of effort was 89.8 million, the county provided $3 million in this year, just about 3.1 million, it's in red to highlight that this was the year of the shift from the pensions from the state level to the local level. We recognize this was a shift that the county had to absorb as well, but the school system got the bill, the county was mandated to provide that funding to the school system to pay that bill, and that was, as I mentioned, $3.1 million. In this year, only $9 above maintenance of effort, and funding was not given outside of maintenance of effort. So, when you look at this shift, 3 million, 3.3 million provided in 2012 for the nursing program, not provided in 2013, but funding was shifted from the nursing program at the health department over to pay for the pensions. So, the school system in this year picked up a $3 million bill to pay for the nursing program, picked up a $3 million pension plan program payment that had to be made to the state, but only received $3 million in funding to pay a $6 million bill. The net of that is a $10.54 decrease in student funding, and truthfully, the 3.1 million that was paid to the pension system was a straight pass-through, that's an expense and a revenue all at the same time. The net effect, a cost per student of that pass-through, 3.1 million, is an additional 142, so the net effect to allocation per student this year truly is a negative $152 in funding to pay for student education. As we move through the next several years, 13 to 14 to 15, the circle highlights those are years again where the pension payment was increased, again, by state law, we had to increase that payment. In 2016, that payment became $4.8 million that we received from the county, again, direct pass-through to the state pension system, and as we look then into 2016 to 17, that $4.8 million in 2016 became part of maintenance of effort into 2017. It's worth noting that that pension payment plan for FY-20 is actually now upwards of $6.2 million. So, we only received $4.8 million in 2017 to pay for pensions, which now costs us $6.2 million. So, again, not entirely your fault, but a statement of where we are based on some of the things that happened at the state level that trickled downhill, where we're now paying $1.4 million then in expenses than we actually received funding for. The net effect in each of those years show an allocation increase in dollars per student, but again, the fact is that money came in from the county, went right back out to the pension program. The true net effect to allocation per student in this set of cycle years is actually zero. We received just only maintenance of effort in those years. The blue highlights here in 18 and 19 reflect the county being labeled per state law as low effort, so required payment of low effort funding to provide additional funding to the county board. In 2018, there's also $53,000 in disparity grant that was added in that year. We do want to recognize that in 17, 18, and 19, the state did provide some funding above maintenance of effort, in 17, the county held us harmless for a reduction of students, of 54 enrolled students, K to 12 students in that year, and in 2019, you provided funding last year in the amount of $230,000, which actually paid for salaries and wages for two teachers and two paraprofessionals in pre-K classes, and we thank you for that and supporting that initiative. The net effect over the 10 years, when we look at the 2009 line to the 2019 line, is an increase of 4.7% in allocation per student over 10 years, or on average, .47% per year increase in allocation per student, so less than half a percent increase, and I think we can all reflect that our own personal finances, and we look at cost of living, increases at a higher rate than .5% per year.
Dr. Michael.
About this document, again, we're just trying to reflect what we understand to be the facts of what's occurred over time. As that money's been absorbed, other things had to be caught, cut, and/or opportunities to expand, educational opportunities for students weren't available as we picked up each one of those expenses, particularly in the year where we picked up $6 million of expense for the money for the pension, and at the same time had to absorb the nursing cost. So, that was a big hit in the year that we had $6 million of expenses with only $3 million in additional funding, and that $5 million across the entire time period has, again, whittled into opportunities, especially when we haven't seen a significant increase above maintenance of effort during any of those years as well. So, if we were receiving, you know, millions of dollars above maintenance of effort, you could say those items were indeed paid for over a period of time, when in fact, they have just, those costs have been absorbed into an existing budget with no additional revenue over that period of time. But again, we'd be glad to entertain any questions you might have about this document. We do want it to be accurate, we do want it to reflect factual information, so we just think it's important that we're all on that same starting point. Again, we recognize the county was hit with retirement money, we recognize our pension money, we recognize the county had road service money reduced, but we want you to also understand and where our position is from the school system, that we've gone backwards over a number of years with per student allocation. Again, a half, half a 1% increase is what we've averaged over the last 10 years, a half of 1%, so we're not even maintaining inflation costs for salaries or wages, we're maintaining inflation costs for materials, equipment, supplies, contractual services, those types of things, with a half a 1% increase per student allotment. This... This, yeah, this money reflects only the operating budgets, so the general fund budget, it doesn't reflect the capital budget. So, the $1 million for safety and security is part of the CIP, part of the capital improvement program, and that money's reflected in that budget.
Are buses considered now a capital improvement, or is that operational?
Those are now part of our operating budget.
Replacing buses, buses is the operational?
Yes. It was an item that you'll get a paper every year, or your county staff gets a paper every year, we can reflect items that the county can choose to pay for outside of maintenance of effort, and buses was one of those eligible expenses. Because the nurses were paid directly to the health department, and the health department was providing us services, you know, that money wasn't coming to us, it was going to the health department, although it was reflected on the education page, but it was not part of maintenance of effort. The Judy Center's an independent operation of the school system in one way, and the crossing guards in some counties are paid for by the sheriff's department.
And then, prior to, or 2012 and prior, who paid your pension costs of that $3 million?
That $3 million was paid for by the state, and one of the things the state actually looked at, you know, as they continued to increase the state budget, there were counties that were paying more, and actually paying for other counties' costs. We do very well, I mean, it was a time that I think we're about 50/50, state funding and local funding might even have been better than that, at one point where the county was paying more than 50% of the cost for educating a child. Now, that's changed substantially, out of our $287 million budget, about, you know, whatever it is, 100 million of it or so, close to 100 million's coming from the county, but the balance that's coming from the state, so we're getting substantially more dollars from the state than many counties. So, a decision was made there at some point to shift the pension cost to all counties to take that burden off the state.
The state was paying it, then we started paying it, and now you're paying it.
We fully pay it, and that cost now is up about $6.2 million. So, again, that cost has gone up, and it's not directly benefiting students, there's nothing that's provided to students as a result of that payment.
Dr. Michael, what do you have as a, you have a figure of .47%, what do you think that, what's your calculations, what that figure should really be? Do you guys put a number on that?
Well, I can give you another number that we're aware of, I think we'd all agree public safety is extremely important, I've heard the County Commissioners say it's one of their top priorities, everyone benefits from public safety. I think it's the sheriff's department alone has increased 52%, 52% compared to our 4.7%. So, on average, about a 5% increase to public safety, the sheriff's department, none of us would begrudge a dollar going to the sheriff's department, but I would hope we'd equally spend that much on education. Not everyone has a child or grandchild in school, but everyone, I can assure you, benefits from a quality educational program in Washington County, or the lack thereof, we would all not benefit from that. So, you know, just maintaining inflation would be, I think, several percent over those last 10 years, and we are less than one-half of 1% per child as far as an increase, and that's, as Mr. Prue indicated, we are fully accounting for that pass-through of the pensions, which didn't buy anything, so we didn't take the $152 hit for the pension that passed through, that is straight money, you know, we're spending only a half a percent more per child per year over that period of time, or about 4% more per child over that period of time. Any other questions on our historic perspective? We just think it's important that we all realize, you know, exactly where we are with some of these things. And again, we just want it to accurately reflect the facts, so if there's anything we have misstated, we certainly would correct any of that information from this chart. We'll continue to roll this chart going forward, roll it up.
Just a brief comment, first, we have talked about these before, and I, I for one appreciate, I think our Board appreciates the fact that this does seem to be a logical layout, and as much as we can tell, we have, since receiving it Friday, reviewed it, it, as much as we can tell, looks to be accurate, and very much appreciate that. When we first sat down a while ago, we first talked about trying to dispel rumors and get the facts, and that's the most productive way to meet progress, so we appreciate that. Now, one thing is, while the last 10 years may be .47, not to say it's over the moon, but the last two years have been 1.46 and 1.48, they are three times better than that average, so it appears that things are moving in the more appropriate direction.
And while I'd like to agree with you, Mr. Slocum, I would point to the numbers in blue, those are required by the state of Maryland because of Washington County Public, Washington County Government being designated as a low effort county, that you were required by law to give that money, had you not given it, they would have taken it off the county allocation from the top, not public education dollars, whatever money the county gets from the state government. So, I would have hoped what, that would be true, without being designated as low effort, if the county indeed would have given us that money without that designation, that would be 100% correct, that the last two years would reflect about one and a half percent. But because of the low effort designation, that is the only reason that we know of, other than $64 in FY-18, that we received the 1.329, and the following year, the 1.261. Clearly, the 230,000 the Board gave us late in the game, in the budget process, greatly appreciated, helped with a couple paraproses and a couple teachers of our 23 and a half, 23 teacher and 22 and a half IA expansion of pre-K, all of which came, mostly came in expense of cutting other programs to create those programs. So, I just want to point that out for the record. We would gladly welcome, if the county doesn't get designated low effort, to receive money above maintenance of effort, again, much like we did back in FY-9 and FY-10.
I think we've, I think we've agreed that that low effort calculation, that formula, and I believe there's a couple different aspects of it that is very difficult to foresee and calculate in the future, so I do think it's important to recognize that, that as I've just said, it's quite a formula, and it's one that's hard to foresee as a low effort, it doesn't mean the county wasn't historically paying, or like some other counties had actually written into the state and said, can we pay less? The county has never done that, whereas some counties have. So, I think what you say is accurate, it is quite a formula, though, to try to get through and forecast well into the future, so.
Yeah, we don't know how they count low effort money, whether they count that is actually above maintenance of effort now at this point, but I think until the county starts to, as long as other counties pay above maintenance of effort, which probably more than half the counties do, and some substantially more than maintenance of effort, millions of dollars above maintenance of effort, until we catch up with that, the county will probably continue to have that designation, is our guess, and it's a guess, only a guess. Anything else on this chart?
Just from my understanding, when we go a maintenance of effort and we increase the amount, the next year, that per student calculation is now the baseline, so that if we increase it now, then that next year becomes the minimum.
Per child, so one of the things that'll be reflected when we come to you with our budget proposal, we're down 109 students this year in K to 12 enrollment, we're actually up in total enrollment because of our pre-K expansion, the state right now only pays on K to 12 students, so actually, next year's maintenance of effort in total amount of money coming from the county is a negative $490,000, because you're paying the same amount per students, and we have less students. So, you'll be paying, maintenance of effort is a per student allotment, so you meet MOE by paying, always paying the same amount per student, more students, more in total, less students, less in total, unless you go over to your point, increase the amount of money above maintenance of effort, which would increase the amount per student for the next year as well. So, that's some of the confusion about maintenance of effort. In total, it can be a positive number or a negative number based on your enrollment. Overall, when you go above maintenance of effort, when we talk about going above maintenance of effort inside the general fund budget, it will increase your per pupil allotment for the future. So, I think the answer to your question was yes. Okay, the next part we want to share is just a little bit about our demographics, and I can assure you, I spent, we've had a couple very busy weeks, we had 19 budget meetings to get to the... We had 19 budget meetings to get to the point where we shared with our board some information. We've had 41 report card meetings with principals. So, for a couple weeks, I've kind of been out of buildings, but over the last three weeks, I've spent a great deal of time in buildings, particularly last week and this week. And this still doesn't reflect the demographics of our changing population. Our teachers, administrators, educational support personnel are doing a fantastic job. I could tell you story after story of some of our challenging students, maybe through no fault of their own. Most of these are very young students that we're spending a lot of time with, two and three and four and five adults at once, trying to help these students in various crisis modes, and this data won't accurately reflect what I've seen. What I'm hearing from staff, what I'm witnessing myself, is something has changed in Washington County with our student population, particularly over the last two or three years. I just do not have the research to say exactly what, but I think to a person, we can share many examples of how something's different just in the last couple of years. And unfortunately, it's going to take resources to address that, or I'm fine with the resources if they come outside the school system, if somebody can help, help our children in a different way. This is a little bit about our enrollment. Again, this is solely K to 12 enrollment. So, back in 2004, kind of went through the housing boom, our numbers ran up, they're close to 22,000, they kind of drifted off. We've kind of rebounded a little bit. This year, we're down 109 K to 12 students. We do have between 850 and 900 full-time pre-K students that are not reflected in this graph, and that's significantly higher than last year. So, our overall enrollment and the students that were supported has increased this year. Our number for the state, what we call the money numbers, down 109. And the money number's true at the state, the money number would be true also at the local government level. But we are actually serving more students than we did the year before, even though this chart reflects a negative number. Free and reduced meals, if we go back prior to 2004, we'll actually go under 30% of our student population receive free and reduced meals. So, now, we're right around 50%. We did drop back this year from 48 and 1/2 to 47%, so we dropped 1.5 percentage points. We think this is a reflection of the economy changing. Obviously, Washington County, what we were, had unemployment there a number of years ago in double digits, I think, 10, 11%. Like now, it's around 4%. So, we think that's a reflection here at the farm rate, but even with that dramatic decrease in unemployment, we didn't drop that much in farm rate. But we do think our drop is a result of people going to work. My concern would be, and I shared with the board earlier, are people now just above the rate or the eligibility for free and reduced meals? Are the jobs that they receive push them into the $100,000 range, or did it push them into the $55,000 range, maybe just where their family doesn't, no longer receives free and reduced meals? Our kindergarten readiness, we've talked about with the Board of County Commissioners. We're trying to address this with the expansion of our pre-K program. So, the red line is the state, and the yellow line is Washington County Public Schools. We are on the uptick from the data from 2017. We don't officially have our 2018 data back. January 22, the state board will hear a report on the KRA, the kindergarten readiness assessment, and at that point, we're going to release it to our board in a full report, we think, on February 5. We anticipate it'll go up this year, I'm hoping, and I think if it does go up, it's going to be primarily because of our pre-K initiative. Much of our pre-K initiative didn't kick into, until about December, January, and February of last year. So, this current year, going into next year's KRA, the 2019 KRA data, will really be the first time that we'll be able to reflect as much full-day pre-K as we have. And again, we're only serving about half the population with pre-K, and we definitely want to see that expanded over time. Last year, we were second from the bottom in kindergarten readiness. My goal would be to improve substantially. Counties like Garrett that have full-time pre-K, last year at least, they were the number-one county in kindergarten readiness. We certainly should be able to do as well as Garrett County, in my opinion. I think they were over 60-some percent, 65 or 6%. Our EL population, our English learner population, this has been titled ESOL in the past, it's been EOL. EL is the new terminology, but these are children that, I was in a school today, a student had been in the school for about two weeks, he doesn't, still doesn't speak one word of English, and a teacher was working with the child, or actually, a pair of professionals working with the child, having pulled out of class, trying to work on sharing how to speak English. But we're pressing close to 600 students that are receiving English language learner support. As students do learn English, over a period of time, they phase out of this program. So, we have many students in our school system that received EL services at one point, but we're very proud that we're able to conquer the English language at a point that they phase out of the EL population. The state's now tracking immigrant population, and we're seeing a significant increase. You can see from 13 to 18, I think 191 was our number just this past October in immigrant. So, these are individual students that have been in the United States for less than three years, may or may not be receiving EL services. These could be people from countries that speak English, and it may or may not require English learner support. Homeless population, can see it's been pretty much a steady increase, particularly over the last three or four years. So, we're pressing 800, probably on track again. I don't know the exact number today, but will probably be very similar to this next year, when we finish out this current year. Homeless population, obviously, another whole host of challenges. These are children that, for whatever reason, have lost their permanent residence. Most of these children have a wide variety of situations. Some of them are staying in hotels, some of them are staying in temporary housing, some of them are temporarily mislocated, maybe moved in with grandparents, something like that. The only way to compare '17 and '18 is, this year, they pulled out foster care. So, in 2017, every foster care child was actually technically identified as homeless. Well, in fact, the majority of our foster care kids actually are in a, they're not in their own home, but they're in a stable home environment. But the way to compare '17 and '18 is, we have to add on the foster care that's no longer embedded in the 2018 numbers. So, over where we were last year, if you compared apples to apples, we'd be looking at 900 versus 800 when we look at our homeless population. Our homeless population has the right to stay in there when they become homeless. If I'm a Boonsboro Elementary student, and I'm suddenly homeless, and I'm staying at motel six or eight, or wherever I'm staying at, I've changed school locations, well, by law, federal law, we're required to try to offer that child a state, make their school environment stable. So, we're transporting many of these students back to the district where they were before they became homeless. So, the number of requests that we receive every year, we're pressing over 700 requests for changing transportation. So, it's almost daily that we're changing transportation for students, and sometimes students are on one bus for a couple of weeks, and their location changes again. And all of this is at additional expense. We have students who are on the bus for a couple hours a day, sometimes an hour, an hour and a half in the morning, an hour and an hour and a half in the afternoon, to try to maintain them in their home school. It's difficult to make a direct route, you know, from Hagerstown back to Hancock, or Clear Spring, or Boonsboro, if that occurred. Students receiving home and hospitalization, big jump in this from the last two years is the children being diagnosed, particularly in middle school, school anxiety, some type of mental disorder, those types of things. This is one of the dramatic increases we've seen of children under home and hospitalization as a result of various diagnoses. Treachery, for some reason, the last couple of years has picked up dramatically, too. So, these are students that are missing more than 20% of the time unlawfully. So, these aren't children that are out on home and hospitalization, these are children that are unlawfully absent, has increased substantially the last couple of years. So, just some big asks that we're looking at for the county commissioners. We'd like to see, if not, you know, immediately, but it may be over a period of two or three years, is there a way that we can restore that $5 million? Some of the items that may be eligible for outside of maintenance of effort or embed them in our general fund would be the ideal way going forward. We've been able to reduce our nursing expenses a little bit. We're working with Merediths right now, at least for right now, it's cheaper than it was with the health department. So, that, our buses, crossing guards, and the Judy Center expenses still are running about $5 million, very similar to what they were back in 2009. Is there a way for the county commissioners to look at, over time, to phase back in those lost revenue dollars, and that would expand educational opportunities for students? Enhance school safety. You know, what we've done over time, the school safety started out with a grant at South and North High, paid for, paid for the resource officers. When the grant ran out, the school system picked up the funding. As we saw the need for more school resource officers, including just a year or two ago, we've increased our school resource officers to 10. A lot of counties are paying for this out of the sheriff's department budget. What's happened in Washington County, this expense has come at the expense of educational opportunities. So, there wasn't additional money added for resource officers. Again, we haven't received above maintenance of effort, but it's a new cost that we've had, as we've expanded from zero, when we had two officers paid for with a grant, non-general fund money, now to 10, paid for out of educational dollars. Can we shift this money to the sheriff's department, not only for the sheriff's money and the city resource officer, and allow us to keep the money in our general fund, so we can use it again for expanding educational opportunities for students? Another part of Senate Bill 1265 is, the county's to provide adequate coverage for school resource officers across the county. That's outside of our expertise, and we want to continue to work where Sheriff Mullendor and what is adequate coverage across the county for resource officers. There may be a need to expand that even more in the future.
Quick question, sorry, for clarification. Let's say we did switch this money to the school resources office, to the sheriff's department, then you guys have decreased your expenses, but according to maintenance of effort, we would still, the maintenance of effort money would still be there, so it's not going to be decreasing anything. And so, by doing, by looking at it that way, you guys have more money that's coming into per student, okay? But it didn't increase maintenance of effort, it didn't, we didn't get any allocation, and if we did that, we'd still be considered a low-effort county, and you'd be asking for additional funding above that, even though we saved money on the bottom side.
I think what we would do, if you could pull out an item like this and/or restore the $5 million over time, I think we would just count it all in our ask. So, whatever our ask might be, doing these various things might solve two problems at once. So, I think what would happen is, actually, you wouldn't see an increase in above maintenance of effort. I just think through this a little bit. I mean, right now, it's the reverse. We ended up hiring 10 resource officers out of no increase in money, out of educational dollars we had. So, I guess we're looking for the opportunity to put that back in place, shift that cost where most of the counties have it right now in the sheriff's department, and allow us, because the other thing we could have done is not hire any resource officers.
No, I understand.
Use that money for educational purposes, but we saw the need for safety things.
Yeah, no, I understand that. My thought is, giving the school board a savings at that point, and, you know, if that happened, you gave them the savings, but then the additional state funding would still come under there, so then you're getting on both sides, we reduced your expenses, increased this amount. That's what I'm trying to figure out, how could we adjust that number, so that we're not getting billed on both sides?
I understand what you're asking. I mean, it's one of those things we'll have to look at in the whole context of what is our new ask when we get to you in February. I think it's all part of, is there a way to restore the $5 million, or $1 million for the next five years to get that restored? Is this shift part of the payment for whatever we might be asking for in FY20? So, it'd be a whole combination of those things. In the end, it might go up per student allotment, and that's what we, that's what needs to happen. Again, we're at 1/2 of 1% for the last 10 years. Is there not a reason to increase the per-student allotment? I think there is, which would indefinitely require money for the number of students that we have, unless our student enrollment continues to decline. Good question, and I think it's part of the bigger context of what is our ask in February of the county commissioners, and what of these other choices can you consider as you look at it?
Dr. Michael, have you received any more updates? I remember as we went through that committee meetings back in April or May, we talked about the state defining adequate coverage, whether or not we needed the number of school resource officers we needed. Has that number been further defined, any idea?
Still more, I think they're sticking that on the counties to determine adequate coverage. I think it's one of those, who wants to be the one to say we had adequate coverage at whatever, whatever happens? You know, there's always going to be criticism that we didn't have adequate coverage. But you could have, you could have five resource officers at a school, and they might be in the wrong end of the building when something happened. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to minimize the safety of anything, but that, again, is where we just need to work collectively, is with the resource officers, with the sheriff, with the city, what is adequate coverage? I think it's one of those things, there'll never be enough, but what is, what is at least, you know, some adequate coverage? We believe right now, and I don't know whether they'll make it as far as to your request or whether it'll be pulled out, but we're working with Sheriff Mullendor right now. We believe we need at least two more resource officers to provide adequate coverage. So, we're working on the possibility, maybe even a grant that might be able to pay for that. We don't know, how long-term or short-term that grant might be. But even if that's over in Sheriff Mullendor's budget, if he can secure the grant, that would lessen the cost of the county. Thing we haven't talked about separate of this general fund is our capital improvement plan. So, you know, we've asked for a number of things over the last number of years. We generally look out 10 years of our capital needs. We're definitely having an increasing number of buildings that are exceeding 50 years since their last renovation. Our most recent request to you was talking about taking six elementary schools and combining them into three. That is not necessarily a desirable thing that we're asking to do, but that's trying to be creative, and how can we solve this long-term capital problem of maintaining our buildings? I think the last time we talked to you, we were looking at about 188-year replacement cycle of schools. It is not realistic. We have a lot of schools that really need some modernization. We obviously have schools that don't have walls. We still have, I think, 11 buildings that are partially walled up, were built during the open school concept. I was in one this morning, I shared with the board, I was in one this morning. Teachers were doing a knockout job with instructing students, but it was very difficult hearing one class over top of another class. Kids were 100% under control, they were participating in instruction, but it was very distracting to the learners. And this is the title on school, that students need every bit of attention they possibly can on instruction. So, we need to look at, how do we fund the 10-year request? How do we even fund, I think right now, we're not showing evidence that the funding of the six into three is being fully funded over the next 10 years. How do we, how do we work on that and honor that? We're even interested in a joint committee that would look at a sustainable capital plan. We have to look at, how do we keep boiler, chillers, and roof? How do we keep the kids cool, dry, and when appropriate, cool and dry, or cool and heated properly, and then keep them dry with the roof? That does not sound like an unreasonable request. Washington County well exceeds the life of boilers and chillers, well exceeds the life of those. When we're compared to other counties, our maintenance department is frequently praised for the work that they do. Our trade team does an excellent job. Something's supposed to last 20, 25 years, we have something, we have some of our schools built in the seventies, still have original equipment in them. You know, something that probably should have been replaced at 25 years. But we're also running the risk of a major failure on some of those things if we don't maintain our maintenance program. So, our request would be, look at our 10-year plan. We're willing to work with a committee and look at it, see what's reasonable, but we need to fund it. I will make sure that we're cool, heated properly, and dry during a period of time I'm here, but this is a long-term problem for the county if it's not addressed. We're going to be looking at, even if we do these six schools, 10 years out, we'll have 17 buildings, I think, that'll be over 50 years old, and that is only going to grow. And that's assuming we do the six schools into three in the next 10 years. If we don't do that, that number's going to be, be higher. But that number's going to grow on the county, and I think we owe it to our citizens that take care of those assets appropriately. So, we're asking, one of the big asks would be to fully fund our 2020 budget. Again, we're not to that point yet, that's not going to happen until February, I think, late in February when we come to the board, but there'll be information probably in the paper from at least my initial ask of the Board of Education for consideration. How do we fund that, and how might that look in combination with restoring the $5 million with the resource officers, those kind of things? It could be in combination of all those things that that might work out. And I think that's what we... that might work out. And I think that's what we have today. So, we've had, entertain any questions? I think we're going pretty well with our schedule.
Do you have any updates on the Kerwin Commission and how that's going to affect funding?
Well...
I opened the box, didn't I?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No.
It's a massive, it's a big mess, and that's...
Yeah, we've been following that carefully. There's four subcommittees, we've tried to keep up, we've made comments on that. Superintendents have been updated, assistant superintendents have been updated, board members, Mabe, I think, has been keeping the boards updated. We think the Kerwin Commission will come to an end here at some point, but it's really going to flip over into what's legislative body going to do with it. Up here, numbers like $4.4 billion would be the state lift on the Kerwin Commission. They're talking about 2/3 of whatever would be on the state, 1/3 on the counties, so I don't know what that means. But I think what's going to happen is, the Kerwin Commission will get picked apart in pieces, and somebody will introduce legislation piece by piece. It might not look anything like Kerwin when it's done. I think it's, you know, Kerwin's a 10-year initiative, so it's a long-term implementation of it. It's just hard to tell. I've heard a lot of energy behind pre-K. What I'm hoping is, we don't get penalized with pre-K, because some of what they've talked about is working on places that don't have pre-K. And I hope the money doesn't go there first. I hope they recognize our 850 students and give us money per student. That'd be a huge lift for something we've already had to make a $2.2 million cut last year, to make happen last year in our budget opportunities for students. But it's a, it's a kind of wait-and-see. I don't think it's going to be an immediate big chunk of money that we're going to see a lot out of this year. I do think there'll be legislation passes that start something this year. We're going to see how that develops.
Dr. Michael, that, one whole slide show you did, just an observation, I would guess that the homeless transition, farm program, special transportation, that's probably, would you agree, it's a direct result of opioid crisis?
That's what we believe. I wish we could, you know, say that for sure, but what we've heard about births at the hospital, and the number of children that are affected by some type of an addiction, is an alarming rate in Washington County, where I think we're seeing that showing up in schools at an alarming rate. A lot of the challenges that we're seeing are younger students. We've always had some challenges with students that didn't want to be in school, or something like that at high school. That moved down to middle, middle school, and that's where we're seeing our greatest amount of mental illness and going out on home and hospitalization. But our behavioral challenges and academic challenges, we're seeing in a big way at elementary right now.
Well, how do you, how would you explain Garrett County being at 60%, and us at 37 in pre-kindergarten readiness?
Well, what Garrett County's had for a number of years is, they've had all-day pre-K. So, one of the things we gain out of pre-K, I believe, is we get the child earlier, rather than getting them at five years old, we're getting them at four years old. Maybe we're getting them out of a tough environment, where they spend at least six hours with us instead of, you know, at home or wherever else they might be for the day. They're obviously, they're a sponge. When you see these kids learn, we have children going into kindergarten, reading, and when I say reading, reading, you know, really at the end of kindergarten level, when they enter kindergarten, is a result of all-day K. We saw that out of some of our all-day K's last year. So, I think that's a big equalizer, pre-K can be. I didn't think, I would say this as a longtime Republican, but I see the need for three-year-old programs in Washington County as well, for a select group of our students. I think, again, we can counteract a lot of the challenges that they've had from the time of birth up through three, with a three-year-old program for some of our students, not, certainly not for all of our students. We do have a lot of our students that are in excellent nursery schools. We don't have a need for those students to be in our, our pre-K, they're in an instructional nursery school. We have people that are parents that are, you know, their own daycare provider, stay-home mom or dad, and they're doing a great job with their child. And the KRA data's broken out on all those self-reporting, you'll see data from all those things when you look through the KRA. So, my goal is to get our kindergarten readiness from our own pre-Ks, well up in the 60, 70% range, coming out of our pre-Ks. Our pre-K, we take all special ed, we take all high-risk students, all that is first enrolled in our pre-Ks. So, they're our most challenging population.
I'll turn it back over to President Klein and President Williams.
Dr. Michaels, Jeff, President Williams, and thank you for this pleasant conversation and the change, exchange of data that'll help make our decisions. We have many challenges to meet together, and I surely hope, look forward that we can meet these challenges together, because, again, we all live here. I don't doubt, and I've said before, every one of you have a passion for what you're doing, and I have a lot of respect for that. So, I thank you for the warm welcome, and as the days and weeks and months go by, I hope we can come to some type of agreement where we can provide the education needs for our children. With that said, any commissioners have any follow-up? President Williams?
I just want to thank you for being here, for the questions, and for the good discussion. Thank you. I look forward to future times when we can meet together and discuss the needs of our school system.
One last, one thing I suggest, I've already asked President Williams if I could meet with her again. So, if any of you board members, commissioners, would like to meet one-on-one with each other, I strongly encourage you to do it, so we can get some dialogue, friendship, fellowship going, and better understand the needs of each side. And I would welcome that, and I'm going to start with her again. So, with that said, I've been told I need to close the meeting, the commissioners, with a motion to end our meeting. So, from one of the commissioners, I have a first, a motion to close our meeting today in a second.
Second.
Second, or...
Yeah, that was fast.
It went, it went around that way, didn't it? All right, a first, a second, close our meeting, law in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, same to you. Merry Christmas.